Okay. Good evening, everybody. It is six o'clock PM. It is August 25th, 2025. Mercer County Board of Education is in regular session. All board members of the superintendent are present. We'll have our pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That puts us on the superintendent's opening remarks.
Yes, sir. President Pritch, few things on my list, and then we have a couple of presentations. But just want to let you know that we did have all staff return last Monday, and we had staff development CE on Monday and Tuesday, then the prep day on Wednesday, and our kids returned on Thursday, Friday. This is the first full week of our kids being back, and I'm telling you, in my experience, it seems like it's the smoothest opening that we've dealt with. I don't want to say that too loud. We already started, but we don't want tomorrow to be. Thank you, Ms. Jones. Thank you. But a wonderful, wonderful opening at all levels, and then also with the kids coming back. We did have a bus that had brake issues. We had to get another bus, and then they had another bus issue that we had to run another bus also. Other than that, everything went well with our transportation also, so I just want to share that with our opening. You have the GSA proficiency level rankings. I did email those to you when I got them from Matt McBride with the Eye Ready Curriculum Associates. They had some rankings. You have those all the way back to 2017, 18, to current, the math and English, Language Arts. You have Mercer County Public Schools GSA data comparison. I sent those to you also. Did you get those emailed?
Yes, today.
Okay, got that. You have a copy of the Mercer County Goals to Approve. You have a draft of my superintendent's goals. They're in your packet there, but they will need to be approved by September 15th. So we got a meeting before that, the superintendent's goals. You got a paper copy, yes, sir. And I can get you electronic copy, but I just printed that off. I got you today. Monday, September 1st is Labor Day, No School. That's next Monday. And then also, you guys have the School Boards Association Fall Conference on Friday, September 5th, and Saturday, the 6th. I want to share that with you, and Mr. Pritch is on the executive committee there, and I think you started a little earlier that day.
Going down Thursday, there's a meeting.
Yeah. And with that, we have two presentations. Ms. Mitchell, do you want to lead that intro?
I have two invited students, secondary students, that were actually invited by the State Department to come and are part of the group. So I'm going to go with Brianna. We talked about this event last time because she was about here and she was talking about the state. And so she's a part of all that and the founding part of it, but she did a little more than what the others have to do. They went as trainees, she went along even more. So I'm going to let her go over what she did, and then Tiffany was invited to come and do work with the social studies and roll out for the civics program. So we'll power both of them at the faculty meeting. Just briefly.
She'll be getting behind teacher voice. Some of them.
You don't think so?
Wait, wait.
Well, good evening. My name is Brianna McKinney, and I teach English Language Arts at Bluefield High School. And I was asked by Susie Garrison at the State Department to come and share some of the things that I do in my classroom at the sale conference, and one of those being living literature. Now, living literature, I do this a few different ways. I have one overall main project that I do that is a very collaborative project. It's inclusive, and I have a video from one of my students that I'll share with you where she gives a basic explanation of what this project is. Mr. Athie, I have videos to share. I worked on my computer. Okay, so with this living literature project, I do it with my honors classes and then with my juniors. And it is all-inclusive and collaborative. And what I mean by that is we work with students of all ability levels, and my ninth graders, they're my honors group. They actually team up and work with Bluefield Middle School students in special education classrooms. So we do that using Zoom. So my students will have small collaborative groups that they are assigned to, and then we pair them up with the students from the eighth grade special education classrooms at Bluefield Middle School. And they use Zoom then to work with these students each day in the classroom setting. And you can see here, I have some photos of what that looks like inside of my classroom. So you can see that the students are actively engaged. They're actively teaching these students the mini lessons that we do. So with the project itself, students use children's storybooks. They get to choose three children's storybooks, and they take these stories, and they have mini lessons that they do along the way with them. So to start with, they get their three classic stories, then they go to complete their mini task. And that's how they get their grades. So the first task is each group reads their three stories. Then they take book notes from a graphic organizer. Then they brainstorm. After they brainstorm together as a full group, they will write a script. Now, they will combine all three stories into one original script. And then we actually perform these plays live at Bluefield High School and invite the elementary school and primary students to come and watch their plays on stage. When it's all said and done, the students then write a reflection essay. So that is how they get their grades. It's broken down into different components, so that incorporates so many content standards along the way. And a lot of times, the students don't even realize all the different skills that they're learning along the way. So this is what a Zoom day looks like in my room. You can see the students have their computers up. They do use headphones sometimes if it gets hard to hear from the middle schoolers end or on their end. Everybody has assigned their own pair of earbuds. So this might be one assignment organizer, book notes, and they would use this for each book as they go through. And this is what performance day looks like. So they create their own backgrounds. Each background is created on a PowerPoint, and then those are projected onto our big screen in Bluefield High School as the students perform. They do costumes. They go all out. And then the final piece is that reflection essay where they have to tell what went well, what could have went better, was it enjoyable? Did you like collaborating with different groups of students? And they're very honest usually in their feedback with me. I had one, I think I put it in this example, she actually told me, "I felt like I was doing more of the work than some of the other people in my group." So it's a time for them to be open and honest, and I tell them that. I want to know what's going well. I want to know what's not going well. So that is a huge overall living literature project that I try to do with my students each year so that we can include everyone, and we do work with Bluefield High School Special Education Department as well. Those students actually come down to my room and work directly with my students during that time period. There's a couple other ways that you can bring literature to life without doing an all-encompassing project, and I just wanted to share those with you as well. One is when I do my short story unit with my 11th graders. There's three short stories that I love to teach every single year, and with those short stories, they are to pick one story, one scene, and then they have to recreate that scene in film version. So not only do I get to see then what their perspective was of the text, I also can check for comprehension and understanding at that point as well. So they will actually film one scene from one of the short stories. Propaganda is one of my other favorite units to teach. With this one, my students, we go through the various types of propaganda. We define them, we do all of that, and then they actually have to take a product and create their own commercial. They have to create a product, and then they have to create their own commercial, and then they actually shoot their commercial and submit it in video form. Everything that I do as far as living literature, I do use a rubric as far as the grading process given upfront so the students are well aware of what things I'm looking for, what must you have in your videos and your presentations. Also with plays and scripts, students will take parts. They interpret their favorite scenes. If any of you've ever taught ninth grade English and you get to the Shakespeare unit with Romeo and Juliet, and you have kids now, they're like, "I don't understand this. What are they talking about? I can't understand the language in this." So one, we work to break down the language, but then at Bluefield, we have this lovely front area in front of our school that is, has nice like little concrete patio area with benches all around. And so when I get to that unit, I introduce that as our very own Globe Theater. And we go outside and sit around on those benches like they would in Shakespeare's time at the Globe Theater, and we take parts and read those parts out loud, and then they get to pick one part that's their favorite and reenact it for us right there in the center at our Globe Theater at Bluefield High School. That usually gets them more involved in the Shakespeare unit. It also helps them to better understand the language as they're interacting with each other. Because I'm like, okay, what do you think this scene might mean? Tell me, explain to me. Okay, you think you have it, show me. Reenact it for me. And at the end, they do an overall Romeo and Juliet project where they actually become the actors in the Globe Theater, and they do a mini film, and they have to incorporate the language from the Shakespearean period as well. So we have a lot of fun. I think that's part of it is just making it meaningful, but also making literature fun for our students. And I wish my videos would play, and I'm so sorry that they don't. But I'll leave you with a quote from Elizabeth F. Barkley. This is one of my favorites. "Student engagement is the product of motivation and active learning. It is a product rather than a sum because it will not occur if either element is missing." So I think sometimes just getting that motivation from your students where they may not be apt to work with you as much on pen and paper, or they may not want to just read and write, or read, take a quiz. But if I found that I present things in different formats, then I tend to get more participation from more students, especially those who struggle or those who seem to lack self-motivation. They're more apt to get involved in the group work, in the collaborative work. Oh, I can shoot a video. So I can do this? Yes, you can shoot a video. So I can edit that? Yes, you can edit that. They edit them, they add sounds. So that is just something that I do in my classroom, one way that I try to bring literature to life and make it more meaningful to students. Are there any questions?
Board members?
Do you share this with us? Do you share this with other teachers?
I have. I have talked about it with some of my colleagues, and I asked them on performance day to just, you know, hop in the auditorium and take a look and see what we're doing. Usually most of them will come by sometime on their planning and take a look. But I haven't shared it with countywide teachers, no.
Like, that's a good idea to think about.
Okay.
Other members?
I'm just glad that students today can get as much out of Shakespeare as students in 1977 did. I didn't understand a word of it until my English teacher, God love her, put on that little red record and played it, and then I heard it and it started making sense.
I tried to read some the other day, and honest to goodness, if I didn't know what was happening in the scene, I could have not told you what was going on. Seeing the scene does give you an idea of what they're talking about. That matters.
It does, it does. The ninth grade, when you first started, and you tell them, "This is really I am doing." What? What? So, you know, then we make little stories, and we write them back together, and then we go on to it. Yes, they're an overall project. They do a film of a scene, but they have to use the language.
We appreciate you bringing literature to life for them.
Thank you.
Thank you. Absolutely.
Yes.
Stop by room 211 anytime.
Hiding behind the blanket. And I got to say, thank you, Rosemary, for introducing me as a young lady. I'm getting some mileage. So my name is Tiffany Jones, and I was selected to attend the Civics for All of Us by the National Archives Institute. I went in July. It was a wonderful, wonderful, wonderful experience, and I cannot thank Angie Grace enough for forwarding me the email on this opportunity. And actually, when I came back, I told her that next year, the email really needs to go out to everyone, secondary and elementary, because they do two cohorts. There was one elementary cohort and one secondary cohort, and they do both of those during both sessions. And hopefully, this will be something that will not be on the chopping block because Doge cuts, because this actually comes from a private foundation. So they expect this to actually be able to continue in the future. So I had to apply in January or February, and I found out in late March, early April that I had been selected to attend this, and I was obviously, as a history teacher, extremely excited to get to go to the archives and see what type of opportunity he offered through this conference. And those included, I'm going to try to keep it short, even though this was originally designed for a 30 or 40-minute presentation, I'll move quickly. We got to tour a lot of primary source documents. There were literally probably between 80 and 100 that he showed to us. So the ones that I've included in the slideshow were the ones that I thought were kind of the big bells and whistles, but they had Hamilton's letter in defense of the Constitution, the Pearl Harbor radar plots from 1941, and then George Washington's inaugural address. He also had Andrew Jackson, before he was president, opposing the whiskey, the whiskey tax. There was a letter opposing women's suffrage from a woman, and then in 1972, women got to finally wear pants to their federal jobs. We also learned a lot about the presidential libraries and the resources that are open there. And, you know, my big takeaway there was there are a lot of opportunities to be able to Zoom meeting with these historians if you plan it in advance. And interestingly enough, while all of these are physical libraries, Obama's library is a completely digital library. It has no, no physical building to it, which was kind of interesting. The Johnson Library, each of the historians, just to share this quickly with you, were asked to bring with them an object that they thought kind of showed the power of that presidency or the president as an human being. And the historian for Lyndon B. Johnson brought this beautiful quilt and held it up and started telling the story about how when these orphans from Saigon had to be evacuated, and how this administrator in Texas at the hospital where they initially came to have medical clearances before they were farmed out and adopted by American families, she collected all the clothing from these refugee children, and she turned it into a quilt. And there was a woman sitting just, you know, two rows in front of me, and she just had tears streaming down her face. And we found out after this presidential historian finished presenting that she was actually one of the orphans who had arrived in Texas and been adopted by an American family, and, you know, just totally changed the course of her life and opportunities that had been provided to her. So it was really kind of a, you know, little moment where you got the chills all over you kind of thing, and I've got a picture with Teresa a little bit later in this, but that was just such a sweet presentation. A lot of our history teachers already use this docs teach.com, which is a fantastic resource, and they're going to be constantly updating it because this is the 275th anniversary of the Declaration of Independence. We got to take little mini field trips where we got to really examine the Capitol Rotunda, looking specifically at architecture. I've been to Washington DC with two student groups, and I had never had the original stone area pointed out to me that they have kind of encased in the Capitol where you can look down and see what color the Capitol was before 1812, the War of 1812, when it was burned to the ground. And a lot of symbolism with the emphasis on agriculture, with corn and wheat in a lot of the Corinthian columns, the emphasis on beliefs and the importance of analysis of artwork and pulling that into your classrooms. There's a great presentation area called the Record of Rights that is in the archives itself, and it literally walks you through the Magna Carta, but it covers like continuity and change of her time elements, again, using a lot of artwork and architectural analysis to broaden that understanding. It covers civil rights, marriage rights, rights to protest. It had a great democracy lab, and I'm hoping that I can get our graphic organizers. I've actually got one of my students already kind of helping me with this a little bit, telling me what I need to purchase, so that they'll be able to hopefully recreate this for me. But this creating compromise is a great way to force kids into compromise and discussion because you had to either increase funding, decrease funding, or keep it the same, and there were impromptu questions on the back of each tile that let you kind of hammer that out with your peers. that out with your peers. Again, if you plan a trip to Washington DC for your students, you want to make sure that you include a stop at the National Archives because that is where they will see the Declaration of Independence, the Bill of Rights, and the Constitution, all very important documents, obviously, to the United States of America. Another area of the Capitol, if you can arrange it on your tour, is there, originally, the Supreme Court chamber was in the Capitol. They did not have their own building. So any case or heard before, like 1898 was decided in this chamber, anything after that went to the Supreme Court building itself. But it was very eerie in here, and you could honestly almost feel the ghosts of Dred Scott and Plessy versus Ferguson just hanging over your shoulder a little bit. So again, you know, the masonry, the frescoes, the storytelling around the Rotunda, all just a lot of emphasis there. We had several field trips. The American Indian Museum was just absolutely beautiful. Again, a lot of emphasis on art analysis, and they actually sent us copies of all of the analysis sheets that they allowed us to participate in as if we were students so that we could reproduce those for our students. And you can do these, a lot of these on virtual field trips as well. So probably for me, the biggest takeaway were the people that I met. This is Teresa Flahpohler, and she's from Texas, and she was the woman who came from, she was part of the evacuation from Saigon. And in the center, you actually can see Julia here better at the end. I don't know why I couldn't get that to crop the right way, but as soon as she said, "I'm Julia Loving," I kind of turned around and said like, "As in Loving versus Virginia?" And she was like, "My uncle." You know? I was like, "Did you people put this stuff in your applications? I think I would have." And then this was our informal selfie. I made several really good friends, I consider them good friends, one from Bristol, Tennessee. His name was Daniel Day, and I took to call him D-Day. Nick Quintera was from New Jersey, and people kept mistaking me for his mother. Teresa was closer to my age, and she was from Texas, Central Texas, and she was a wonderful lady. She was a media center teacher. So Mary Stimson was also in my group, and I also said, "Mary Stimson, as in Secretary of War Henry Stimson," and Alfred Loomis. And she went, "My grandfather's brother." This is so weird. Look at all these famous relative people I'm hanging with. And then, probably most interestingly, on Tuesday night, and you can tell we had been walking all over DC, we were a hot sweaty mess, and Nick says, "Let's go to this Capital Burger. I hear it's really good." And so we take a seat, and we're there for probably about a half hour, forty minutes, and then comes this elderly gentleman with a younger guy, and D-Day kind of leans over and is like, "Tiffany, is that Mike Pence?" And I was like, "Maybe." Not sure. Might be. So we sat there and devised a plan to where when we walked past his table, I was assigned to go, "I'm sorry to interrupt your dinner, sir, but has anybody ever told you you are Mike Pence's doppelganger?" And that was gonna be our like, "Yes, it is Mike Pence," or "No, it's not Mike Pence" moment. And he kind of looked down and smirked and said, "I am Mike Pence." Yeah, we had a moment there, and once we said we were teachers, he actually became very complimentary of us and offered to take his picture with us, handed my cellphone over to his son-in-law, and said, "This is Dan, my son-in-law." You know, kind of moment. And super nice man, and, you know, definitely praised all of us for being on the front lines and said that, you know, "We're the ones who deserve the kudos more than anyone else in the institution gig." And his wife was a teacher for over thirty-one years, which I was not aware of, so that was very nice. But that was a moment. You can imagine us, us four history geeks, I mean, we're outside of Capital Burgers, jumping up and down like we've met Justin Bieber. "Oh my God, we've met Mike Pence." You know, kind of moment. And I actually have a friend who's from Bluefield, who works for the State Department, Carl Ashley, and we went out to dinner on Wednesday night, and he was really interested in what we were doing at the archives and what we were learning. And I was letting him look through my pictures, and he stops on that one, kind of, "Is that Mike Pence?" And I was like, "It is Mike Pence." And he was like, "I've worked for the State Department for twenty-seven years and lived in Washington DC for almost thirty, and never had anything that cool happen to me." So I felt like, oh, we've been touched by the gods of the archives. Plenty of extra time to go, you know, I had opportunities to go to the Portrait Gallery, just walk around the city. We tried to go to the Washington Monument. Unfortunately, by the time we got there, they had closed it because of lightning strikes. So we only got to take some pictures outside of that. And then that was kind of the conclusion for, that was my whole cohort in the middle of July. And there was a second cohort. But I would like to encourage any teachers, you know, to take part in this. It was just such a fantastic opportunity to learn. It reinvigorated my love of history for certain. I try to never wane from that too much. But the Power and Light exhibit, I'm actually dumping that into a PowerPoint for my sister who teaches West Virginia history, because when I got there, it actually said that that was closed on July 6th. And one of my colleagues in the cohort was behind me from California going, "We checked out the Power and Light exhibit, it's just so cool." And I went, swiveled and was like, "Wait, the Power and Light's still up? It said it closed on July 6th." He's, "No, it's still up." So I ran over there and got tons of pictures from Wyoming County, Logan County, Mingo County. So it's kind of cool being a West Virginia girl, and that's the big thing on exhibit at the Smithsonian is Power and Light. But also interesting, in the upstairs of the archives where our conference rooms were at, I was in the Jefferson Room most of the time, but right outside in the lobby was a Remington statue, Frederick Remington. And I was like, well, this doesn't happen every day at the office, does it? Kind of moment. But that was just, it was just such a wonderful, wonderful opportunity. And if you have history teachers at your school, or no history teachers, please, please, please encourage them to apply for this next year. And if they need any help with the application process, please tell them to email me, I'd be happy to read over, you know, tell them kind of what I put, and, you know, hopefully I'll get them in. But I do want to also say that there were multiple teachers. I thought this was a situation where we'd only have some from each state, but like California had six teachers, Texas had eight, Florida had five, Georgia had four. So I mean, it's something that, if you apply to it, more than one person from a state and more than one person even from a district could be chosen for. Excellent opportunity. Dr. Ed, thank you.
Wonderful. Questions?
I know, that's what I said, he would like that.
I've kind of been a lot this whole, chosen my Ray Hall, spend a whole week in Congress up there.
My only other piece that I wanted to let you know, the enrollment, we've got the first day count and the third day count. I missed that on my superintendent's update there, the first day count and third day count of enrollment and different figures there without the pre-K and the early learning, those collaborative numbers and all that, but still, looks like a lot to, difference from last year. So anywhere from four hundred to six hundred when you're looking at those numbers that way. So that's, that comes into, at one point in my career, you looked at eight thousand dollars a kid, and looking at that, you could be anywhere from four million to five million dollars of loss. So I just want to share that with you all.
Hopefully the pre-K and the collaborative pop the numbers up some here. So we're not, it's down, but it's not down those kind of numbers right. All right. So we have, next on the agenda, we have some citizens input. First person on the agenda will be Dale Lee. Mr. Lee, if you'll come up here to the podium. Just a reminder, the policy is three minutes. I'm not a, like, I don't time you. So, you know. Braxton Kelly, we give you two minutes?
Yeah, I took more than that.
I'm not shocked about that.
Of course. It doesn't surprise anybody. First of all, thank you for the opportunity to come and speak. I'm Dale Lee. For the next week, I'm the president of West Virginia Education Association, and then beginning Labor Day of all days, I'll be the co-president of Education West Virginia, the merged organization of WBEA and AFT West Virginia. I came tonight to talk about all the changes that have happened in public education this year. We know that the governor's vaccine policy is going to court. We know there's changes to PEIA. We know there's change to elementary discipline policy. We know there's now mandatory reporting by our educators when it comes to a student requesting to be called by a separate name. And there's all kinds of questions about the newly merged organization, as well as questions that you have in your county. One regarding the policy that was just passed about the reporting policy. And there are a lot of questions about that, particularly when it comes to disciplinary action. And while I know that public employees are not covered under NLRB in this, the NLRB makes it clear that if the disciplinary action is to be in effect, then you have the right to report it. How we're holding our educators to a higher standard, a more stringent standard than that is simply amazing to me. But the reason I came is, I went around the states, I said, speaking in number of opening schools, beginning schools. We have one in Mercer County in the staff development, I understand that. We asked to set up a table so that beforehand, or when they were going in, I could answer questions for people, particularly about these policies, about PEIA and different things like that. Before I came on, I think it was on Monday, I was asked to give the superintendent a call, which I did. We spoke again the following day, or we spoke the following day, I got the voicemail the first day. And he explained to me that this was in service and that no one could be allowed to set up a table, and that because he didn't want the teachers going in late or being distracted or anything like that. Assuring that that was not our intention, our intention was to give an information table and that no one would be late, and I would come down and man the table so no, none of our members would be late going in. And he said, "Well, we're not having anybody there." I said, "Let me make this clear. I'm not to come to Bluefield." And he said, "I would rather you didn't." And then made the statement, "Now, what are you gonna do? Call your board members like you usually do?" The answer to that's no. I didn't call any of you board members. I decided to come here and speak myself, and speak to you face to face, because that's the way it's gotta be. See, we have some problems now. We have some problems here in the county. And we know that people have a ton of questions on different things, policies, lesson plans, different things. We have the right to answer those questions to our education. We have the right for our members to go in and answer questions that they may have. And it's like that in everywhere. So I know that things are not good within our relationship, or my relationship here in Mercer County, which makes me sad because it's my home county. And yes, I know I have relationships with many of you board members, and I could easily call, but I chose not to because of that statement. I wanted to come and speak to you individually, and speak to you as a group right now. We have problems we need to resolve. We are here for our educators. We are here for our students. I traveled the state bragging about how good our schools are. You saw two examples of that right before I spoke. And I know my time is up, so I have one request. We need to get this resolved. I recommend and would love to have the opportunity to go in the executive session so that we can work out our differences, work out our problems for the good of the students, for the good of the educators in Mercer County. I know you can't make that decision tonight, but I would love to be on the next board agenda, and I'll do whatever I need to do to come down and speak to a delegation, as a delegation again. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Betty Powell.
I'm gonna stand behind this, but I'm not sure if you'll see me. But I'm sure you will hear me. My name is Betty Powell. I'm the financial secretary at Princeton High School. And my main concern is, I have worked multiple secretary positions. Bluefield High School was where I was first hired on, and then I moved over to Princeton Primary as a financial secretary. Then I transitioned over to Princeton High School. I was the front desk secretary there. Felt like a traffic director there, but still, that's the position I was in. Then, a few years ago, Mr. Atkins kind of convinced me, persuaded me to move over into the financial secretary position because that particular position was like a revolving door. And somebody, and I can't even remember who, asked me, "Why do you think that position is a revolving door?" Well, after having been in it for several years now, I know why. You can make the exact same rate of pay sitting out there signing kids in and out every day. I leave, when I was in that position, I left every evening, no stress. I leave every evening in my job with more weight on my shoulders than I could ever imagine for the same rate of pay. I do audits twice a year because for some way, somehow, the state always manages to randomly pick Princeton High School. Not sure why, but I'm okay with that because I'm, I feel very confident in the job that I do. If there is a mistake, it is a mere accident, and it's nothing that, I feel like I can usually justify if there are mistakes. Thankfully, we had a very successful year and no audits. I think a lot of that is to do because we switched over to digital ticketing, because that's where a lot of my audit violations came from, was ticket sellers. But I just real, I know that there are times that you all can come up with different titles, position titles for jobs. I ask that, I know that I can email legislators and ask them to add, I guess, a position to recognize financial secretaries, because there's not one, that's taken care of. But I ask that you all at least try to come up with something that might work a little faster because I'm sure my email will fall on deaf ears. I'm just a little secretary at Princeton High School, but I can assure you that I carry a ton of weight to just be a little secretary. And I think that we could probably come up with a solution. And is it adding more days to my contract? I don't think more days is the problem, the solution. I don't, because that's not compensating me for the level of work that I do. That's just telling me, here's you more days to work. That's great, and if you want to do 261, I'm fine for that, but don't come at me with 230, please, because that doesn't benefit me at all. That just tells me work a few more days longer, but that doesn't, doesn't reward me, I guess you would say, for the job that we actually do. Several of the other financial secretaries are all in agreement, they understand this. Why they didn't come, I don't know, but I know that I can't complain or fuss, grumble, and growl, you know, about it if I don't try to do something about it. So I have sent a few emails, and I think I spoke with Mr. Toman right after he got hired, when he said, "Sure, I'll meet with you." And little did he know, I was really coming in there to say, "Hey, can we do something here?" I just ask that you all please try to come up with something that will recognize the financial secretaries, because, I mean, I feel like I'm one audit shy from being a CPA. And it's not, it's not easy, so that's, that's it.
Thank you for your comments. If you, if you go back and look, we can't really do anything this evening, but if you go back and look at prior meetings, it's been the conversation. So we're aware.
I hope it continues to be.
We're aware.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Twenty-three, twenty-two.
Mrs. Mitchell or Dr. Atkins?
Present on twenty-three, twenty-two. You're dead.
Are they not charged or batteries?
Okay, just briefly, I wanted to mention, as Mr. Toman said, we did have a very smooth start, including Timberwood. Very proud of the staff there and what they've accomplished. It's a big transition from what most of the people that worked at that building are used to, with much smaller schools, and particularly in the area of dismissal, you know, that's always a challenge in larger schools. But we've had a very, very smooth start, we're very proud of it. Always things we can do a little bit better, and today being only day three leaves a lot of time and room to do that, but good start. Did want to reflect quickly on August the 18th PD, we did something a little bit differently this year, and I know that Emily Huddle did the same special education. the same with special education teachers. We had pre-K through three ECATs, the assistant teachers with their teachers for training that day, so they all hear the same message. And then, in the afternoon, for grades K through three, we actually talked about their roles, and what it means to be an assistant teacher, and how that's different from an AVE, and then what their role is to support the classroom teacher, and I think it was very well received. I was with the third grade, because they are brand new to that, this is their first year of having that, and we felt like that it went very well, and was very well received. And our fourth and fifth grade teachers don't have ECATs, so we did writing training on that day. I will give you copies probably the next board meeting, or the first one in September, about our plans for PD for the fall. We have a few tweaks to make, but per our outcomes on the GSA, we're going to try to support math more, and then also do more opportunities with teachers in ECATs together.
Well, you, yeah, you left it open, and we, we touched on this before, but I want to talk about it in an open meeting. The, the, we talked about it openly smoothly. That's not been smoothly. We've had a lot of issues with rooms. So what are we doing to address it?
I think that's something to aim your Brent, or ones that have been working on rolling that out. I do know that when it was presented to administrators, it was well received, but I can't speak to, I've not had any conversations, or many conversations with anyone about rooms. I'm just talking about the opening of schools, and the process of school, and that type of thing. So they may speak to that when it, when the much.
Well, we can talk, they can talk about that at the end, then, when we.
Thank you. I've not had much.
Okay.
Dealing with that at all.
And I want to say, we had a great start. Secondary started out with lots of cheerleading and excitement, and we had all four schools, all four high schools represented by the cheerleaders and different groups that came in. Our speaker was Weston Kechnick, who I'd never met and had never heard, but was so impressed with him, and he was able to come to us through the Gear Up program that we have. And so he did a big kickoff speech on different ways to reach kids, instead of the old, you know, "This is a program, and this is what we do." It was, "What's its purpose? What's its goals?" And for years, we looked at essential questions, and every teacher would have an essential question on their board as soon as you walked in, and he said, "Don't give the punchline away at the beginning. Let them figure out what you're trying to do." So he gave us new ways of looking at how we can go in and teach, how we can plan, and how we can work together as groups, so that we're providing the best for the kids and letting them think a little with higher-level skills. In addition to that, we also, from this summer, and those folks that, like last time, about the instructional rounds, it kind of goes hand in hand with what he practices. It's the problem of practicing, and not, "This is the program, and this is what the standards are, and this is how we do it." It's let's take those standards and see what we can do with them, so that they make sense to kids. And the kids buy into it, and it becomes theirs, and you have better input. And kind of that same thing, if kids know you care about them, and that you're working with them for the right reasons, they'll think you walk on water and do a lot of things for you. And very, very positive, but probably the most exciting part for me, I got up at one point, and it was just video, and everybody in the auditorium, just because it's, it was so unusual for me to see secondary people that are up and dancing and cheering and hollering, and they were, and we had everybody involved. It was, it was a great start. It was very positive. Everybody left happy. I had a teacher come up to me, who's taught for years in the county, who's a phenomenal teacher, who said, "You know, I was gonna retire this year, I don't think I can do it now. I think I'm gonna stick around," which is a win for us, if, if they stay. So anyway, we got a very good start with that. This Wednesday, for all of my secondary principals, we don't, we weren't bringing in the assistants this time, because we're gonna host a meeting at the conference room at the board's office. And we have Dr. Steve Payne coming to speak to them. He was essential on the standards for effective schools that we use, those seven standards. And so he's gonna come and share some things that he did that helped with test scores on SAT, and what kind of programs he had in place, and then how he utilized those standards to, you know, make the school system better and stronger. So we're excited about that. He's coming around three o'clock on Wednesday, and we're gonna meet up there. We also, that's a good chance for us to get to show off the data board that we have, that some people have seen and some haven't, but, you know, it kind of gives it perspective when they can look at that board and see what the results are. So we have that Wednesday. We have boot camps planned for this year again, and they'll be in September and October, and depending on the size of the school, depends on how many days that they'll go on. But last year, we had the students bust over here to the tech center and did everything from here. This year, we're going to the schools. We're gonna do it there, at their school, for, and Bluefield is the first school, and theirs, for an example, is from September twenty-third to September twenty-fifth. They'll be there those different days, meeting with different groups. And the purpose of the boot camp is to teach the kids how to use mastery prep, and how to prepare for that SAT. So it's geared toward the SAT test. We also, of course, we're doing the I-Ready, with like the elementary through grade eight. We are not doing it in the high school this year, simply because we did not, teachers just felt like it was too much, they didn't have time with the mastery prep, and they are using the mastery prep. You know, we had lots of stories about the Horizon when we had it, and some used it, and some didn't, but they're using the mastery prep. Then we set our calendar basically from now until December with the different opportunities that are gonna come up. In addition to like the boot camps, we are, we have a new program that's called Pocket PD, and it's a secondary program, and we're gonna introduce that at our breakout session. And my secondary team is gonna do their ten-minute mini lessons on professional development, on how you can better handle your classroom, or how you can better prepare, or how do you observe, so that you're observing the right things, not just going in and doing a checklist. And so we're gonna roll that out by us demonstrating to the secondary people how we're doing that, and then they will take it from, take it from there. We're doing the networking with the new teachers, and Dr. Atkins and I met today with, with Ms. Reif and Ms. Grossclose. We're looking at what they can do together, and then what things they need to do that will be elementary-based or secondary-based. We start our beginning of the year benchmarks on September second. And I guess the, the one thing that I was very, very pleased about, and, and to be honest, kind of surprised, is I haven't, and I'm knocking on wood real, real hard, but I haven't had any complaints about putting the cell phone policy in place. It is, I, I know, I said, I said that today. I said, "I'm gonna beat on the bottom, I'm gonna beat on the top." But, you know, it, I really did, I felt like there would be a lot of questions, and people would have, but so far, I mean, and I've talked to the principals, and, you know, from Friday and, or Thursday and Friday, and then again this morning, the kids are coming in, and you, I've had a few kids say, "You know, we don't have that box yet, we just put them in a cardboard box where we go in, and we put our name on them, and we get them out and we leave." But they're fine with it, I mean, they're good. So it, that's very enlightening, I think, that we have that support, and obviously their parents are backing it, or we would have pushback, I think. So we're excited, we're off to a good start.
Board members?
Rosemary?
Yes, sir.
Appreciate those comments. It's amazing, when you set expectations for students.
They can rise to it.
Most of them can rise to the occasion.
I'm so proud of that.
And I too also had some feedback from, from teachers, former teachers, about what a nice day, and what a pleasurable experience it was to have kids that they actually felt that they had their attention.
And I think the kids felt that.
I can imagine, being a teacher, I would have blowed, well, that was a different time.
Yeah, I, I was with you, Mr. Vodfrey. I really.
You know how I was. The number one thing was important, was what was going on in that room, and the cell phones would have, I probably would have blowed a fuse a long time ago. But I appreciate the comments from the teachers.
Yes.
And I think, hopefully, it'll continue to go well, and, and make an improvement to our test scores, and our attitudes, and hopefully our social skills for our kids, because I believe they're lacking, and I, I really attribute that to a lot of the ills we have as a society today.
And I will compliment the principals as well, because they, you know, made sure that that was a topic of, of conversation at their trainings, when they met with their teachers, and how to roll it out. You know, don't make it a negative thing, but this is why we're doing it, good mental health, good involvement, engagement with the kids. So, you know, I think that helps too. When we, when we present something in a positive way, then we can expect a positive outcome, and so I'm very.
There'll be hurdles, I guarantee it.
Oh, sure. And there'll be the kid that'll get his out, or her, you know, and we know that. But as far as, you know, the opposition-type thing, we so far have not had it, and the, the kids seem, like I said, they seem fine with it. I've had, I've seen several different kids out over the weekend, and, and from different schools, and, you know, like I said, one of them told me, "We just have a cardboard box, we don't have a, a, one of those little bucket things, or fuses, or whatever." So, you know, they were willing to do that, but they, they seemed to be okay with it, so I'm very, I'm very pleased.
I think it helped that everybody knew it was coming, and they've had summertime, they've had summertime to think about it.
Yes.
And, and, and I, I too have spoken to a few younger people, and they're like, "It's fine."
Yeah, they don't see, and it's like, "Okay." You told us we needed to do it, and, and like Mark said, they rose to the occasion.
I just envisioned going back for a day when they passed notes, can you imagine?
Oh, yeah. We wouldn't know what to do.
Anything else from any other board member?
I do want to comment, the, the, we didn't really go over the test scores, and I'm sure we'll do a deep dive.
Yes.
Soon, but the glide path is up, and that's good. You're gonna have dips in places, and you're gonna have situations where things go down, but when you look at them, and at overall, overall, we're on a glide path to success. I'm not a huge, I promise I'd never say it, but I'm not saying it anyway. Test scores are what they are. I don't know if they're a fair way to evaluate a school system. I prefer the, or the people graduating and getting jobs and succeeding. That, to me, is success. But if this is how we're gonna be measured, then we'll tackle it, and we'll be successful, and we are, we're doing better. So I just wanted to comment on that, because I know a lot of work's gone in, not just at this level, but at the school level, with teachers. Everybody's busting it, and it, it's, it's showing.
Thank you.
And that needs to be, that needs to be reminded to people. Because not everybody, as we all know, is evaluated or assessed, and we don't know how they're succeeding or not succeeding, so.
I'll, I'll tutu that, I, I agree. I do think it's a measure of our schools in some regards, and our success, but it's not a measure of our individuals.
Right.
Our individuals, there's a lot of ways to succeed in this world, rather than a test score.
Agreed.
Absolutely.
Anything else from anybody? All right, then.
Thank you.
We will, anybody else got any twenty-three, twenty-two? Nobody? Don't hide behind anybody, no. Okay, well, then we'll move on. So we're on to the matter of the approval of the minutes for August eleventh, and August fifteenth, twenty-twenty-five, is there a motion to approve? Is there a second? It's a motion and a second. Were there any additions, corrections, or deletions? There appearing to be none. Then on the motion, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed likewise. Motion carries five in favor and none opposed. Under all business, Board memo number forty-six is the pre-K collaborative contracts attached, or the contracts for twenty-five, twenty-six with Case West Virginia, the Learning Tree House, Imagination Station, and Lifeline Child Care. Each is getting a, a set amount per child, and based on the fact that some have more children than others, their contracts range from Case West Virginia, which is nine hundred and ten thousand, Learning Tree House is a hundred and forty thousand, Imagination Station seventy thousand, and Lifeline is fifty-six thousand. The funding is provided in ten monthly payments. Okay, I didn't mean to do that. This has been contrary today. Funding for child nutrition also will be dealt with under reimbursement. Superintendent recommends approval. Is there a motion to approve?
No motion.
Is there a second? There's a motion and a second. Questions, comments, or discussion? Do we have numbers from the collaboratives yet? We don't, we still are estimating, right? Okay.
Seems to be strong for you.
Covid.
Do most of those programs seem to be pretty full? I mean, are they typically pretty full?
We are pretty full countywide in pre-K. We have a couple of spots that are low.
In-house.
In-house, and Amber Reif's not here to speak, but Case is always full, because they have protocols for that. But I think that our Lifeline, Learning Tree, and Imagination Station are close to full as well. So seems like pre-K's larger this year than what we've had the last several, which is good for our future.
Yeah, and I think next year may be the same.
I agree.
Mr. Toman, with a loss, my computer's blanking out.
Okay.
Was, it was first thing, something we discussed, we got there.
It's after.
That's next.
My computer's still black, or something.
Is it still black?
No, it came back on.
Okay. You probably, it's probably a setting on the screen, and it times out.
No, it's when actually, well.
Okay, well, you hit a button, you shouldn't do that. Don't do that. Okay. Any further discussion? Then on the motion, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed likewise. That motion carries five in favor and none opposed. Now, for second reading is policy, is Board memo number thirty-two, which is Policy D-nine, Non-Public Student Participation and MCPS. That's Mercer County Public Schools, for those that don't know. One comment was received, the superintendent recommends approval. Is there a motion to approve? Is there a second? It's a motion and a second. Questions, comments, or discussion?
I did have a lovely question, and it's kind of where the rubber meets with the thread, on four point three. And this is just brought up to our audience here, who, and who is, four point three, be the, the, the funds not available in Hope account, and, and here, that parent guardian is not a bigger obligation, paying the invoice by the end of the school year, the student will be named, that future courses, test date, et cetera, et cetera. Again, who, people who do that, and maybe will be done.
It would be the following year. We will track it in the accounting department, whether we receive payment or not, and we would communicate that out to the respective ADs, or whomever would, would be relevant at that point.
Well, can I ask a follow-up question, and that would be, why would we let them in the class before they pay?
Because we will not receive payment immediately from Hope. One of the questions was, what will happen? If we let them in a class, are we going to remove them from a class if they haven't paid in thirty days? And no other county that, that I spoke with is doing that. They're doing, they're letting them stay that year, and if the following year, they haven't paid for the prior year, they cannot do it again.
So when do they get the Hope money? Do we know? I thought it was pretty much upfront.
They release Hope funds twice a year.
Beginning of each semester. So if they want to take a course first semester, they'll have the money at the beginning of the year, will they not?
They should.
So again, you can't get into Disney unless you pay upfront.
Well, I will have to say that, that, you know, sometimes it is hard collecting from students, and, and even our own personnel, when they receive overpayments. So this is what Canola County's doing, what Raleigh County's doing, this is their, their recommendation, and I feel it would, would be the least disruption, as did everyone else who reviewed this policy.
Well, if the money is being released soon, thank you. Soon, soon, well, I'm assuming that the parents, if, if they were going to use it for first semester, then do they apply before first semester starts, or do they go ahead and, and begin, and then apply for Hope? Because as I read through it, it said if there was money left in their account.
It could be that they've used that, those funds for something else. They could have used it for, you know, this is not just Hope Scholarship. This is also anyone who receives Hope, or anyone who's a non-public school student. We, we have homeschool students as well, who participated in various bands, Mc Tech, sports, et cetera.
That were not receiving the Hope Scholarship?
That are not necessarily receiving the Hope Scholarship. This policy affects all the non-public school students.
I guess the reason why I went down this path is, the more I thought about it, I, I, well, and I know we're on our second reading, but the more I thought about it, I'd like, I was wondering if maybe some ac, action would be in the policy, or would that be a policy? You know, we talked about the difference between policy.
Policy and procedure.
And procedure. Would that be more of a procedure? Would that be more of a procedural question?
It's more of a procedure and it would be up to the.
So then we still have the door open. We can adjust our procedure? This is a new policy, correct?
We.
We don't have a procedure, do we?
We, we, we don't. Uh, I, I'm just struggling getting past the idea that we're gonna exclude some of our kids from our program, possibly because we have wait lists at Mc Tech now, do we not? We may exclude them and then our kid doesn't get in and a homeschooler or a private schooler gets in because they do interviews now. I mean, it's, it's, it's a job. It's, it's, you don't just get to walk in. And then we don't get paid and we exclude one of ours. I, I, I have an issue with that. You know, we, public school is essentially free to a person that wants to come to public school. And, and if they make that choice, that's fine. But that's a choice they made.
Yeah, the only thing I could think of, again, and it probably would be procedural, would, if there's a grade or something involved, uh, can you hold the grade until, until payment is received? You can pass all the law or whatever you want to, unless it's got a little bit of teeth to it, it's meaningless.
Well, this is based in state law, right? State determined that we had to charge, correct? So, this wasn't a choice Mercer County made. Every county in the state has to charge back against Hope.
I understand that.
So, what do you do? Let them come to school for ten days or two weeks or thirty days? What do you want to do?
I don't know that I have a good solution. I'm simply saying, if, if, if we're gonna exclude public school students from participating in lieu of a homeschooled or a private school individual's child, then they need to pay when they enter the amusement park. I guess, you know, get to go into Disney and say, I'll, I'll pay next week or I'll pay in thirty days. They go, you can't come in. And I'm not comparing us to Disney. I'm just gonna be saying, when you get a service, you pay for it typically at the time of the service, not eventually or someday down the road. And, and that's, that's my concern because I know we've had an issue with computers now for five years that we don't get paid back for when they're damaged. So, I see this as just an extension of that.
That's down what I was talking about.
You know, and it, and it's, it's like, what do you do? I mean, you can't come back next year. Well, I, I was a senior last year. It doesn't matter.
What is the? Do they have to pay only if they get this money from the state?
They have to pay no matter what.
So, it comes out, if they don't get from the state, you can't come to other parks.
Right. I can't tell how much money's in their Hope account. I just ha- I can issue an invoice, but I have no idea whether there's money in their Hope account or not.
I was thinking, you probably, typically cannot depend on the state to get you your money on time. So, they may not have it.
Except in the case of Hope, in which case they're breaking their back to make sure that everybody's got it and it's well-known to everybody.
It's kind of like going to the, to the doctor's office that doesn't have a contract with your, with your network. So, you pay upon service, you get an invoice, and then you send it to your insurance company and then they reimburse you. I think that might be a solution, uh, like, like Greg said, and I know it's not Disney World, but at the same time, if we go anywhere and, and, and approach or make the, make, make application for something, and if they're not a Mercer County public school student, then they've got Hope, daddy's got deep pockets wherever it might be coming from. But if they want, if, if Jimmy wants Kathy to be in this class, then, uh, he knows upfront that he's gotta pay. And then reimbursement can come from the form of an invoice from you or whatever, some notification that then they can apply for reimbursement.
Well, they're already getting Hope money. They wouldn't have to apply for reimbursement, would they?
He's saying that, that we would require them to pay upfront and not bill.
Yeah, but they, but he's also saying they would have to bill Hope, but they're already getting a full amount of Hope directly, right?
It depends.
Okay.
It depends.
That's what I'm asking. So, it wouldn't necessarily, all of Hope doesn't necessarily go to the parent if the school system hasn't requested it?
They, they only release by semester.
Yeah.
So, we could potentially take some of the funds that were, if they're going to a private school for the second semester, for example.
Well, let's just, let's just throw a hypothetical out there. You know, lawyers love hypotheticals. So, I'm a senior and I want to play football and I bump a public school student. I want to play baseball in the spring and I bump a public school student. That's two. And I want to come here and do some dual credit engineering programs and I bump some students. And I graduate. That, you know, you might owe six, seven, eight thousand dollars and you just look at us and go, I'm not gonna pay it. Don't have it, not gonna pay it. And that's the problem I have with waiting and not asking for the money upfront. That's just a fundamental view I have and it's based in the fact that we have fought for years over broken computers and people just refuse to pay. That's not near the amount of money we're talking about here.
And, and the other side of that, thi- this isn't by our choice. Like you said, the state's, uh, created this. And, uh, they want to treat us some, I mean, there's money involved, treat us like a business. Well, then maybe, you know, do we need to act like a business and different businesses, so? But anyway, I didn't mean to really sidereel the, uh, policy here, but I do think, uh, procedural-wise, something, since it's a new policy, that we definitely need to look at.
Well, you know, we have our opinion. What about the people that are doing it? What, what say our administrators and, uh, I don't know, any coaches here? Do we have any coaches? Nope, no coaches. What do you think?
Well, who is gonna be responsible for collecting from, like, parents? Is that your office? So, that's not gonna involve the administrators, really?
Have you, have you spoken with your cohorts in these other counties? Have they explained their reasoning?
I'll hold the vote till you give out.
So, for sports, they don't want to bill until the S S, and, and that's in this policy as well, is that they wait until rosters have been finalized before they even issue a bill for sports to make sure that they have made the team. Um, and, and again, some of it's just personnel. As I said, we have about five employees we're trying to track down to repay us for things right now. It's just difficult sometimes. Then who's going to tell them that they can't play that sport or remove them from the class? There will have to be a lot of work upfront if, if this does happen, if we're not going to allow them to take the class until they've paid. I don't know what the turnaround time for Hope is. Never logged into the system. I haven't, I will have to learn how to use it and invoice them. This is new to us.
And how would you handle sports if your kid comes out, he tries out for a week or something, and then he gets cut? But he can't try out, it's gonna pay you upfront.
I can absolutely distinguish that, but I can't distinguish a class. Because there's no cutting. Once you get in the class, you decide to stay or leave. It's not a, it's not, you're not cut. I, I do understand the difference with sports, but I, I, um.
I just, I know as an administrator, former administrator, especially with sports, particularly, one I can think of is cheerleading. And, and we'd love to have every single kid that goes out for cheerleading be able to make it, but we don't have cheer, uh, uniforms for every single kid. And if you know how much uniforms are, it's not something you can just, boy, you can't even buy them anyway because they may be two years old and, so then there're gonna be differences. And so, like you kind of pointed out, you, you kick off, you got this all-world cheerleader that's an at-home student and they come and kick off one of your ki- that truly means one of your, a public school kids who will get kicked out of, uh, the, the ability to cheer.
Well, that could be true for a lot of sports.
Well, I know that. I'll just throw that as an example. I, I, we had, we had that happen often with cheerleading and a few other things where you don't have so many uniforms.
Well, that's more, it's more likely to happen with the homeschoolers than it is the, the private schools because they do have sports, but they don't have every sport. They don't have football, for example. So, uh, I don't know. I, I don't have a, a good answer except that I, um, I don't know, it sounds like a broken record, so I'll end it there. Yeah.
The issue of, uh, for two reasons. We thought probably it was twenty-seven, seven out of yesterday and we lost one day to twenty-six, homeschool and private school kids. In talking with some of the parents, um, if they chose to go homeschool or if they chose to go to private schools, those private schools are charging them the full amount, even if they're half-day in tech. So, when they start getting billed, they're gonna be less likely to take our programs because they're gonna have to pay that cost. You know, they're only half a day at one of the private schools. They're still paying the full tuition even though they're only there for.
And do those take most of Hope, those private tuitions? I don't know. They do take the majority or all of it?
I feel like that's probably gonna eliminate a group.
I would say you're right.
Are, are you saying that you're concerned that's gonna harm our technical education center? Oh, you're just pointing it out?
I'm just pointing that out.
Okay.
But I feel like that will be a barrier for private schools because I had a parent ask me for a letter saying that the student was gonna attend half-time with tech. And I provided that letter, but then the private school still kept tuition at the same rate. And so, when we did our interview, we, we did applications, did interviews for all Mercer County students first. Everybody that wanted to apply, we interviewed everybody. And then it was after those classes were chosen that we allowed them to go to private schools to apply.
Okay. All right. Well, maybe that's the solution.
I was gonna ask you if we had any priority for our own students. Okay, that was gonna be my question.
But what happened was like as people moved in or, um, oh, I changed my mind, now I want to do this. Then, of course, some of those homeschool or private school kids, we had a spot if that kid was.
So, it could potentially.
It was open to them first.
Okay. Well, that's good to know. What, I mean, uh, there is always the option to, since Leslie's researched this and, and she's the one that has to deal with it, to try this way this semester and see what happens. I mean, I wouldn't go beyond this year with this format without a serious evaluation of how we're shaking out, but.
How much is it per class or per sport? What do they pay? Okay, so that means for those home, those private school people, that's two thousand dollars per semester. So, that's gonna be four thousand dollars.
For Mc Tech, right.
For Mc Tech that they probably don't have laying around.
That was per year, per year.
Right.
So, one thousand.
Per year. Okay, all right. So, that's two thousand dollars. I'm skeptical that we'll see the money, but that's just me. We, we're having trouble getting twenty-five dollars for broken keyboards.
Well, I think. That is different. That is at the school level, not at the business level. I would say that.
Oh, I'm not. This is not a, it's not a, but the, the problem is, is we're not gonna get in the business of suing people. But, but, you know, I, I, that's pretty ugly.
It's not gonna be enough money probably to sue.
And, and, well, I mean, you take them to magistrate court and you can do it, yeah, I mean, it can be done, but it's just ugly. And you don't want to get in that, in the habit of suing children because that's ultimately where you're going. So.
I understand how, if they're half-time at a school, how they can get full-time.
Because it's a private school and they get to do what they want.
They can do whatever they want.
I mean, they can get that full amount to homeschool and not put them in any school, so, for Hope. They can get it in, I mean, so, I don't think that that's monitored.
I understand how you can have it both ways. I mean, how can you take it all whenever that child's being educated at another facility also?
Because that's the, that's the entrance fee to the private school. If you want to come to our school, this is what you have to pay.
Yeah, I'm gonna say, I'm su- I'm assuming their argument is you're taking a spot for half of the day and we can't fill it, but.
I'm saying, I, I'm not making a judgment. I'm just telling you, it's, it's what you pay if you want to go to the private school. I mean, homeschool is so different because they don't have the tuition. They do have costs, but they don't have that tuition. So.
But it's still public money, isn't it?
Well, yeah, we can get, we can go down that conversation if you want to. So, but that decision's been made. We have to live with what we got. So, um, so, i- are there any other comments or questions? Any other statements?
Are we really ready to, so, if I understood, and I appreciate what Jacinda said and Leslie's done all, all the work and then some to get to this point, are we going to go ahead and consider, and I say stuff wrong all the time, are we gonna, are we gonna consider approving this as it's presented with a codicil?
Well, there's a motion and a second, so, I mean, we can change the policy at any time. All we gotta do is look at superintendent and go, we want to see that policy again. We need to adjust it or change it.
Well, also, we discussed about a lot of that being procedural, not policy anyway, what we're talking about, right?
Well, it is procedural in the sense that she has to collect it, but it is policy if you decide when they have to pay it.
Yeah.
If you say you gotta pay it upfront to get in the class, then that's a policy. That's a, that's a determination. If it's, if it's, uh, bill them later and figure out how to collect it, that's, that's procedure.
Leslie, do you think you'll be able to assess how well it's going by the end of the semester? Or do you think it will take until the end of the year to make that assessment?
I'll just look at how many students we have following this right now. If we have enough students, I think we'll be able to at least see how Hope's doing and how quickly we can get those students.
So, when we bill for Hope for this semester, we're really taking money from next semester's Hope money because they've already gotten this, they've already gotten this semester.
Yes.
So, can we go ahead and bill for, when, when can we bill for next semester? We can't because that's all.
The following semester, which is if they're seniors.
Assuming that they're still a student, right.
We can bill as soon as second semester starts. That's what we're doing.
So, how many, you say how many homeschool and private school students do we have here?
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six.
Rodney, do you have any idea from the high schools, how many are taking classes or participating in sport?
No, I, I do not, not in the sport.
Do you have classes?
With classes, I think actually four or five, so, definitely get like, let's say like two men, but somewhere in that neighborhood that we're gonna be getting the Hope, but in the middle of the final school.
To get for a dual cred, for dual credit.
Oh, for dual credit. But that's not, but that includes the ones that Danielle was talking about too, I guess.
That's a hundred twenty-five thousand dollars for one semester.
Yeah.
That's for one semester, it's a hundred twenty-five thousand dollars. Therein lies the rub. Again, I go back to it. When you look at your child and you say, if you make this choice, you got consequences. You know, if you make this choice, it's, I'd go private.
Usually the child's not the one deciding.
Well, but, but the parent, but the parents made the choice. There's consequences for making that choice.
Well, it, it's, it's gonna be a learning process.
Yep.
You'll learn.
That one kind of surprised me.
I would say Dr. Volin, who was always reading online, so I could not just miss you, but along the line, work as well.
In, in a vacuum, I understand it totally. It, it's just how it's gonna work in the real world. That's, that's my concern. All right. There's a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Nay. Carries four in favor and one opposed. All right. Let's do the consent agenda. Get those off so I can actually see what I'm doing. All right. We beat that dog to death. The MOU Southern Highlands, I have nothing. It's blank. My page is blank. No, I mean, the memo's there. There's nothing under it.
Yeah, same.
This is MOU with Southern Highlands.
It just says MOU date and R E, nothing after that.
Attached is M O U, but then there's nothing.
I don't have any, I don't have.
Mine does not also. What, what do you guys think? How do you recommend it? Go ahead, Dr. Volin. My, 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 my way I downloaded it.
Mine has it. Just give us one second. Pull mine back up.
All right.
I don't know why it's highlighted.
Before you tell us anything, let me get it on the, get it on the floor, okay? Uh, Board memo number fifty-three is an MOU with Southern Highlands for fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six. Attached is an MOU between Mercer County Schools and Southern Highlands for the, the school year. It continues school-based mental health services for Mercer and Bluefield Intermediate with potential expansion to other schools. Services include individual and group counseling prevention, early intervention and treatment with coordination. Funding is through insurance reimbursement and expanded school mental health grant with in-kind support from Mercer County Schools. Agreement's effective nine, one, twenty-five and may be terminated by either party within thirty days' notice. Superintendent recommends approval. Someone felt comfortable making a motion to approve. Um, someone felt comfortable making a motion to approve.
I'm moving consent agenda.
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry. It's consent. Yep. I'm all, I'm all kerfuffled here. Let's move on. We'll get back to it. Board memo number fifty-four is RFP number three thirty-one, prime distributor for child nutrition program, the food renewal one. Uh, this was requested from Gordon Food Services, uh, which covers the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. Uh, Gordon submitted renewal pricing with an average increase of 6.97 percent, uh, for fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five. The total bill was $3,652,813. Superintendent recommends approval of renewal one for RFP three thirty-one, prime distributor for child nutrition and food to Gordon Food Services. Board memo number fifty-five is a placement of student from Grand Canyon University. They're requesting that individually placed in Mercer County Schools to complete fifty hours of creating and managing equitable and engaging learning environments that we placed at Glenwood School contingent upon the appropriate forms, acceptable background check and site supervisor being, uh, recommended. Superintendent recommends approval. Board memo number fifty-six is bid number nine seventy-nine HVAC repairs to BHS and Mercer Elementary. Uh, all units on the auditorium fine art wing of the building at Bluefield High School will be replaced. Uh, new piping for the condensate lines at Mercer School was included as well. Uh, we were advertised in, in appropriately and we had two bids. Low bid was Doherty Company, Inc. for $738,800. Superintendent recommends bid number nine seventy-nine for HVAC repairs to Bluefield High and Mercer Elementary to Doherty Company for $738,800. Board memo number fifty-seven is purchase of a used twenty-three Ford Transit three fifty XL van. Uh, Mercer County Technical Education Center has located a twenty-three Ford Transit van with 24,000 miles priced at $44,940,48. Uh, it has a remainder of its three-year, 36,000 mile bumper-to-bumper and its five-year, 50,000 powertrain warranty. Internet search concluded this was comparable to pricing. It was very competitive. Superintendent recommends the purchase of this van. The amount of $44,940,48 from Rainy Auto Group purchases will be funded by Mc Tech. Board memo number fifty-eight is the renewal of the college contract for placement of students for clinical experience in twenty-five, twenty-seven, twenty-six, twenty, twenty-five, twenty-six typo. Um, the, the enclosed agreements with colleges and universities are established responsibilities relating to placement of student observers and/or student teacher candidates for their clinical experience placement in Mercer County. Uh, all teaching, student teaching placements are pending the receipt of background check and a site supervisor being named. And this involves Marshall University and counseling and social work placements. Superintendent recommends approval. Board memo number fifty-nine is the placement of social work students from Marshall University to complete 450 hours in advanced field practicum. Individual replaced at Princeton Primary School under the supervision of Amanda Showalter. Placements are contingent on the forms, background check and site supervisor being named. Superintendent recommends approval. Board memo number sixty is a system, it says PA system for Mc Tech. The director of technology is seeking authorization to purchase a new security system from Cox Security. The awarded vendor for security access control maintenance, RFP. Total cost is $71,974.56. Superintendent recommends approval of the purchase of the security system from Cox Security. And that amount funding will be provided by a 21st Century Technology Grant and the excess levy. Board memo number sixty-one is the paging and bell system for Mc Tech. Director of Technology is seeking authorization to purchase a new paging and bell system for Mc Tech in the amount of $71,974.56 from Communication Consultants, Inc. Uh, Superintendent recommends approval of the purchase of the security si- the paging and bell system. In that amount, two Communication Consultants, uh, is paid for by 21st Century Technology Grant and the excess levy.
Amounts are both the same. I think that's correct, but.
It, those two, I have to say, those two memos are confusing, but we'll get to it here in just a minute. Uh, board memo number sixty-two is cellular phone services with AT&amp;T. Uh, pursuant to state code, which allows, uh, purchasing directly from a competitive, or from a cooperative if, without competitive bidding. This is Sourcewell contract, uh, with AT&amp;T. Total expenditure for twenty-four, twenty-five were $47,098,49. Superintendent recommends the award of cellular phone services to AT&amp;T FirstNet through June 30, 26. Under the Sourcewell contract, the funding is provided by the levy. Board memo number sixty-three is payment of invoices which are attached. The checks have been written or being held pending consideration by the school board. Checks will be issued to the vendors upon board approval. P Card, uh, which is board memo number sixty-four. The register for P Card transactions attached for your approval. Superintendent recommends approval. That is the end of consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? Is there a second? There's a motion and a second. All right. Now, questions? So let's start with Southern Highlands because we were getting ready to do that. Ernie's got the light straight in his eye there, so.
I remember thinking about trading, thinking about this.
Like fix it or not?
I was just gonna say, I'm just gonna read what you read, Mr. Philpeck. But it's the same thing that we're doing immediately.
Bluefield Intermediate Mercer have done for years.
Yeah, we've been doing this for a long time.
Right. And I think they're looking at adding a couple of other schools, but I can't remember. I think they were secondary, maybe Bluefield Middle and one other.
No change in the MOU from previous years?
Not that I'm aware of.
Same responsibilities from both parties? Okay. So how about this sixty and sixty-one? Well, one says PA system for Mc Tech and it's actually a security system. One says paging and bell system, and then it talks about security. So we're a little confused here.
I think there was a typo on the heading of the memo. I think sixty should have been the security system.
So you think it's correct just in title?
Yes, the title. She just.
The security quote is $22,229 even.
They're on the title and the wrong amount.
Uh, the.
She's made a mistake.
Yeah, the other one is, um, $71,974.56.
So what was the first one?
Uh, hold on.
Twenty what?
Yeah, let me get you exactly. Stand by. $22,229 is the security quote.
Okay.
And that's all, that's labor materials and that's all in. And then the, um, and that just gets building security. Um, the other one is for the paging and the bell system. That's $71,974.56 and that's also includes labor and all in.
Okay. So just the memos were a little kerfuffled, but that's all right. We figured it out. Okay. Um, any questions about that or any other part of the consent agenda?
I remember fifty-seven. What's the CD class we're on?
Fifteen.
Fifteen?
Of course, we take care of fifteen, but it gets us twenty-four.
Well, that's kind of what I was pointing at. Maybe you have a plaque or something on it for insurance purposes or the CD passing such and such so that we don't get slapped. Yeah.
That include driving.
It's one of the nine plus.
Nine plus a drive. I got that as well.
Yeah. But a lot of times, you know, you're carrying equipment or whatever. So grabbing that extra.
That's a good thing. Anything else?
Board number sixty-two, the AT&amp;T contract. Who, who are we paying for? What, what are we?
Maintenance personnel.
Sorry?
Sorry, we have cell phones for all maintenance personnel, all bus drivers, um, certain administrators and other employees.
Anything else from anybody else? Then I need, uh, Jim and Jacinda to amend their motion on number sixty to correct the amount to $22,229 instead of the $71,000. Do you accept that adjustment to your motion?
Thank goodness.
Yes.
Your second. All right. Then we're adjusted then. All right. So with that, all in favor of the consent agenda signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed likewise. That motion carries five in favor and none opposed. All right. We're under additional business now, so. It's actually new business, but additional, it doesn't matter. Board memo number sixty-five is the first reading of policy G eleven, supplement for coaches and leaders. No actions required at this time. Mr. Toman.
You have a, I think the, I can't remember the red that was in that, Dr. Philpeck, but it was the, uh.
Tennis.
It was the tennis assistance and then also the, uh, early learning position was assigned in far as.
Yeah. So this is just for the assistant coach for tennis right now and then adding, uh, on one of the charts, an additional person. And basically we have a lot of students that are going out for tennis. Um, so we need an assistant coach at the high school level. And so, um, we added that to the, the program, scheduling, cost.
And that'll go out for, or, uh, public comment and we'll see it back here shortly. Board memo number sixty-six is the first reading of policy G twenty-eight, seniority rights and reduction enforced professional personnel. Mr. Toman.
Go ahead, Dr. Philpeck. Can you have that with the principal as the pre-K principal that you added there? Go ahead.
Yes, that is the addition of the pre-K principle, um, that our laterality policy and, and then our speech assistance. And I think that's it on that policy.
All right. For first reading, board number sixty-seven is policy G oh nine, substitute procedures. Mr. Toman.
And that's the, uh.
Is that the yearly adjustment we have to do or?
Yes, then you have the initial red, uh.
So this one is just for substitutes and how we, we assign them or, um, how they are listed as, uh, substitute personnel and what they need to do as far as, um, applying for a position. But one of the things that has changed, as you all may know, is that a high school diploma is not required for all, uh, classifications now. So we needed to put when required. Um, and the last piece of that, we added a little statement in there. Um, in SFE or the Smart Fine Express Substitute Call Out System, individuals can control their calendar. And so they'll mark themselves off for a month. And if we reach out to them, they won't have an explanation or they won't correspond with us. So we added the statement, uh, making yourself unavailable for extended periods of time without notification and writing to the human resource director. And Rachel deals with this a whole lot. And so that's a recommendation on her part. So thank you for that, um, to this policy.
Okay. Anything? Bring it in. Well, that'll go out for public comment. We'll see it back. Board memo number sixty-eight is the first reading of policy G twenty-three, retirees, professional substitutes. I think this is one we see every year. Is that not correct?
Yes, that is correct. Um, this one, we just added the driver's ed and pre-K special needs as one of our critical needs areas. Changed the year and then we added the inter, the information that we received this year about the bona fide separation, where we have to have that sixty-day window. Um, so that's in this policy, um, in red.
Have you ever got a hint of why that was changed like that?
The only thing that I know of, and that's just coming from the webinar that we, evidently this was going all on, all over the nation. And so West Virginia was supposed to have been doing this all along, but we had not. And so now the retirement board's gone on board with what nationwide people are doing. Is that correct? Right, uh?
One thing I see, maybe it's to clear up issues where the employee makes sure they understand, um, effect or affect always get on their retirement pay. Would that be possible to get, to have a window there between retirement and? Because you have to go through these little hoops that it mentions in the policy. Where you have to clarify that they understand.
Right. So, you know, as of July one, uh, sixty days until they get their first retirement check. And so they're getting those first retirement checks now. So a lot of them are checking back in saying, hey, I want to be added to the sub list now. Um, so it does give that bona fide separation, which supposedly is good, not in my world, but in, in the business world. But, um, we've added that to the policy so that it is in policy for people to read.
Okay. Any other questions? Then we'll get that one back after it goes out for public comment. Board memo number sixty-nine is first reading of policy G forty, critical need shortage, substitute bus operators. There's two.
Go ahead, Dr. Philpeck, if you want to answer that one also. Those are all yours, aren't they?
Yeah. And this one just, uh, it actually adds the same kind of, uh, verbiage in this policy to say, you know, there's got to be a bona fide separation and changing of the year so that we can have this approved by the state board.
Okay. That one will go up for public comment and we'll see it back. Board memo number seventy is the request to approve the removal of accountant three position currently assigned to the business office. Uh, we're operating with forty-nine excess service personnel and this is part of an org- organizational review. The treasurer and the superintendent have discussed it and have determined what we're gonna do for now. It may change in the future. Is that not correct?
I think everything in there is correct. And anytime you have a retirement, you try to look at what you can do and reorganize. And unfortunately in West Virginia with eighteen A, it's, it's difficult to do some moving around. And when you look at riff and transfers, so this is an opportunity for Mrs. Wellman to look at that and see what, if she has to, uh, reevaluate and come up with, she has to do something differently. This is an opportunity so you have a timeline that you have to at least abolish a position because of timelines to replace. A position is what, Dr. Philpeck, fifteen to twenty-some days after a vacancy?
So, um, the law states, from what I understand, is that. Thank you. From what I understand, they encourage us to post properly as, as we should. Um, but after the position has been advertised, on that fifth day, you start counting the twenty days.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve? Is there a second?
Aren't we still, is it still?
No, this is, this is, this is board memo. This is board memo.
You gonna stick with that motion then?
Yeah, I agree.
I'll second.
There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed likewise. Motion carries five in favor and none opposed. Board memo number seventy-one are the, is the attached goals for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year that we discussed at the work session. Uh, thoughts, comments, adjustments? I thought, I'm, I'm good with it. Paul?
Moving to approve.
Okay. Well, that worked out really well.
Good thought. He was right.
Okay. There's a motion and a second. Any, any further discussion? Then on the motion, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed likewise. That motion carries five in favor and none opposed. Board memo number seventy-two is Mc Tech Phase One Needs Project. Uh, we will be submitting, assuming the board approves it, uh, we need to submit by September twelfth, twenty twenty-five, our needs project. Uh, the Mc Tech Phase One Needs Project is what was discussed last year. Uh, uh, the revised budget is lower by about $800,000, which is always a good thing, uh, to $15,403,323 due to the lower material costs of all things.
Hard to believe.
Hey, yeah, fifteen, did I not say fifteen million?
Fifteen thousand.
Okay. Well, it's fifteen million, not fifteen thousand. We could cover the fifteen thousand. Um, fifteen million, four oh three, three twenty-three. Um, superintendent recommends approval. Is there a motion to approve?
Do you want to?
Is there a second? There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Did you want to prove an amount that you're submitting or anything like that, present, pretty much? And then also we got the SHOP Foundation that we just submitted also. And then also you have another board meeting before the twelfth date if you wish to bring it back on the eighth to finalize it.
Here's my thought on this is let's approve this and then let Leslie do her magic and come back at the next meeting and tell us what we can do. Um, go from there. I mean, she's got, I know you've got an idea, but you know, you need to crunch your numbers and make sure you feel comfortable. You know, because we trust you to tell us when we're getting in overhead, okay? Uh, all right.
Good deal. So you.
Well, you know, that gives us another good thing to tell the, tell the SBI. Look, we're saving you another $800,000.
How, how did you do that? How, how were you doing that?
Saving the money, materials.
Is that what they said?
Oh, I saw that.
Yep. Yeah. And then the bid comes out and it's $3 million over, right? Yeah. Yep. Been there, done that.
You got a couple small ones, right?
All righty. Then on the motion, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed likewise. That motion carries five in favor and none opposed. Last action on the agenda is personnel. Board memo number seventy-three.
You have a new list also.
You should have a new list in front of you. There were a few little things changed. There were a few little things changed, I think. And I like this at the top, but that's nice to see what may be filled before the meeting. I'm assuming none of those were filled.
Three, four, maybe five positions were filled out of that list.
Okay.
And I'm not going verbatim, line for line, but I'm thinking about five. Don't count them, Greg.
I'm not counting.
Don't do that.
I'm just making sure I didn't miss anything. I'm like, okay, I was mistaken. I need to find out what I missed. All right. Yeah, I see. Okay. All right, there's a motion. Is there a second? And there's a second. Any further discussion? And you need to go to the second session to discuss any of the matters on the agenda. All right. Then on the motion, all in favor, signify a saying aye. Aye, opposed likewise. That motion carries five in favor and none opposed. For discussion, the purchasing policy. So what's the current minimum now, Leslie? Twenty-five thousand. I think that, given the, and some of this is coming from Dr. O'Call and some of it's coming from other board members that I talked to, not just here, but other places. The desire to have more oversight is a big thing now. I mean, that's, we're getting pounded with that from everywhere. So it's not an action item, but it's just discussion, thinking about if we want to keep it there, want to raise it, want to lower it. So you'll see it on the future agenda, just so it's out there and you know it's the conversation piece to be had. All right. Administrative updates. Mr. Toman?
Any, Mr. Mitchell, Dr. Atkins, any updates you guys have from your twenty-three, twenty-two? Anything? Any other administrative, Mr. Wellman? Mr. Atkins? Audio for rooms?
Yeah. As I said before the meeting, I was just passing on the trauma that I was hearing from people. And of course, it was the first few days of school, so you know, trauma is not to be a shock.
Sure. And the first few days of school, you know, I remember what it was like. It's completely hectic. It's nuts. I remember thinking, I just need to get through the first week so that my students can realize that I'm not a crazy scatterbrain old lady and actually know what I'm doing because that first week is rough. And we do take that into account. Now rooms, as we talked about a little bit before, it's an addition to what we already have. It's the company that runs our website.
Right.
Handles all of our social media posts, all of our all calls and texts, things like that. They reached out to us about this addition. It's a service that they also provide called Rooms.
Right.
And it's a way for teachers and families to communicate that is archived and kept and it's something that we can use to go back and look at if we need to, if certain issues arise. And it's also a way for teachers to highlight what they're doing in their classroom. It has almost kind of like its own live feed, like on our Facebook page, where they can say, today in class, we did this and have some cute pictures.
It's kind of like a Class Dojo, but system log.
Exactly. And there is a behavior component that has to be turned on and that's something that I can emphasize with them again as well. The main, I was jotting down some notes here. The main issues that we've been having with employees, and Brent, you jump into, the main thing is a lot of teachers haven't logged on yet, which I understand, like I said, the first few days of school, hopefully that they'll be able to log in. We've had some parents contact us saying, I see two of my kids. I was able to log in. I see two of my kids, but one of my kids is missing. And after we researched that a little bit, it's because that particular kid's teacher hadn't logged in yet. So one, and so we just let them know. It's been the first few days of school. Teachers are still getting it set up. Once they have it set up, your kid will show up in the app. You'll be able to see them. Subs, we have some long-term subs that need access to it and that was an issue with the data coming from Weavis and I think Brent has that figured out with his contact with Weavis. And it seems like some of our McTech teachers are having a hard time too. So we've got to figure out what's going on with that. Now family issues, the number one issue of why they're not able to get on is because their cell phone number, their contact number in Weavis is no longer valid. So a lot of times their phone number might change. They don't let the school know, so it's not entered into Weavis, the real phone number. So that is the information that's coming over to the app. So it's trying to contact them through a number that's no longer valid. So as they're contacting Brent and me, we're going in and changing it so that they can get access. That's the number one thing with parents. I have run into a few where the guardian data, the parent and family data to a student didn't make it over with the student. So that's something that we're going to have to get with App to G about. We do have a call with them tomorrow to talk about some of the issues that we're having and hopefully we'll get it hammered out.
So is this something that's required of all teachers?
And the complaint is, is they can't, they're not to use a different.
Right.
App and they really like the Classroom Dojo.
And the way that we look at it is some teachers use Remind, some use Class Dojo. There are four or five others that coaches use. This is a way that parents, if they have kids in multiple schools and multiple grade levels, they can get all of their messages from our Mercer County Schools app. And you know, once we get through these growing pains and work out all the kinks, it's going to be great.
That is nice from a parent perspective.
Yes, it's going to be great.
And I don't doubt that.
It is.
I think where we aired, and we all aired, was not saying, let's ease into this and start at the beginning of the second semester. So everybody has some time to look at it because we kind of, here's the paperwork, you know, log in, get things going and you're kind of like, mm.
Well, we're just, we were worried that if we didn't start it at the beginning of the year, that it, they wouldn't get done. They, you know, they would start using their other app and then we wouldn't.
I get that.
The beginning of the year would have been better.
If you're like me, you don't have to do it for a second semester. That's when you'll start doing it and you have to stand.
Well, but then, but see, but then you, then your complaint is gone. You don't get to say, I didn't have enough time or.
Right.
I didn't understand it or I didn't get to really look into it. And I think the rollout has been the issue and it's technology. I mean, it's software and, and the things you're talking about. Those are the issues that we face and it's.
My thought was a little bit different in that maybe we should have got the teachers trained slash on it before we tried to roll it out to the parents.
See, we've got ten or twelve of them sitting back there right now and it's got to be frustrating.
I'm just saying hindsight's twenty-twenty, but.
Well, sure, it always is. That's the perfection of hindsight.
And I can guarantee too, that there's still going to be issues with teachers using.
What Amy said. I mean, we have the product. It's ready and we had sixteen thousand and a few odd users, including parents and students on active today that I watched. So I mean, it is definitely working. It's got some issues as any technology will have. We're just asking for some patience as we work through those issues. Amy set up an email account that goes directly to us if there's any issues and we're looking at each one of those. So with some growing pains, if we can be patient, the benefits will far outweigh the negative aspects of this. We've got parents right now that are using it. It's working great. Teachers, it's working great. We just got to get everybody on board and some consistency, so it's.
Just relaying what I'm told.
So are we directing teachers and coaches, et cetera, not to communicate with parents in any other way? Is that what I'm hearing? Or I don't know. Who's that?
Once we have.
Once we're all up there.
Yes, once we're all up and running, we have to be the ones that shop for things that are bigger.
Because I know with sports, it's almost a different one every sport.
It is.
Just about. Well, I don't like that one, so we're going to use this one. And I don't like this one, so we're going to use that one. So that I get. It's just, yeah, and it does, well, it does document everything, so that helps. Okay. Other administrative updates?
Any other administrative updates?
I'm sure you heard there was a water line break between Montcom High and Montcom Elementary this morning. I didn't find, Dr. Atkins texted me early. I called the Bluefield or Blue L P S D and the boss, he was actually out caring for his wife, but I got in touch with the guy pretty quickly. They got me pretty accurate information. We felt confident that we could, we could get the kids there and get them water and get everything held. I had great conversations with the health department the whole time. Both the principals we were in conversation with, we had bottled drinking water and gallons of water delivered to Montcom Elementary before the majority of the students arrived and Montcom High never went without water during the instructional day. But once they did repair the break, he called me back and said that once it got repressurized, it had broken again about two feet downstream. So they, that's when we had to call back, crack, and so we had to do a little pivot there on, on school today. And we, and everybody was talking about what a great start it was and I thought, well, you can convert my job for a little bit. But no, and we did have a school-wide HVAC issue at Bluefield Middle School last week, but working with a local partner, we were able to get that fixed before lunch.
So I don't know if this is true or not, but I heard this through the grapevine.
It's probably not true.
The shelving for the copiers at Timberwood.
Yes.
The top is too low.
It was.
Can't get the copiers in the shelf.
It was.
Who did that?
Well, there was a misinterpretation of the blueprint. We had, the blueprint called for seven feet in between the top of the counter and the bottom of the shelf, or the bottom of the floor and the, the top of the floor and the bottom of the shelf. There was a specification written in one of the notes that said it needed to be eight foot, but when you added up the diagram, it only added to seven. So the contractor did what it was and there was just conflicting information on the blueprints. So ZMM and, and DCI worked it out and they got them fixed Friday. Oh, it's gone. Friday morning, I believe they were fixed.
Okay.
And patched and repainted and everything.
Good. Yeah, the grapevine was right.
Well, if that's the biggest issue, then I work pretty lucky, honestly.
Yeah, I mean, it is. The only other crazy thing is how low the, I know why they did it, but how low the pass key is because of that little concrete. I mean, you're looking at it and you're like, couldn't it come up? Would you just put a gap in the concrete? Put that in.
Oh, normally, yeah, normally I get a, like I keep mine in my pocket and I'm usually carrying something so I can just like scan it as I go, but can't do it now. It hurts my back.
So is Montcom Elementary to go tomorrow?
Montcom Elementary is ready to go tomorrow. They will be able to boil water. They have, they have bottled water. Unfortunately, Montcom Elementary is used to this, but we got that information, we got them the water and Mr. Wright has, he has contact information to the supervisor I spoke with today and also the boss of that branch of the Public Service District. But Larry was a gentleman I spoke with today from the PSD and he said it was restored.
On the HVAC issues that we loaded on tonight, I think Bluefield was.
Bluefield, Mercer.
What's the timeline on those?
Well, we had to wait till tonight to get board approval for them to order the units. We're hoping before Christmas, but probably not. We're talking eight rooftop units for Bluefield High School and there's just, there's just a substantial lead time still on those. We got, they're, they're eight pretty large, pretty.
Do they have heat tanks?
We, right now, yes. We have a little, out of eight, we have three that are working.
But December was when they rented out to the.
Yeah, the Nutcracker, sure. We're hoping that we have heat or we have a situation where we can get auxiliary heat at least during that time. Yeah, I mean, that, that was a, we stressed that in the pre-bid. We talked about it and both contractors that voted, they, they could not guarantee a lead time or a finish time before Christmas. And then Mercer's just a couple. We had a steam leak under the floor at Mercer last year. We really didn't want to dig up the floor on the bottom floor, so we decided to go with a couple condensate traps and we're just trapping it and piping it over the ceiling and back to the holding tank.
Anybody else?
I have a question. Probably it is not appropriate and just tell me you won't talk about it, but somebody mentioned SHOT Foundation. Let me think. Did you make any movement, any hospital could you get my, what the sun damage and where we are?
Ask that after the meeting's over. Ask Leslie after the meeting's over. Because it's not on the agenda, so we shouldn't talk about it. Although we've already acted on it and we really don't have anything else we have to do, but it could, you know, open meetings law. Right. Okay. So you were right. Okay. Anything else?
We need that motion.
I do. Yeah, he's going to remake the motion.
Move it on effective system for personnel move.
Motion and a second. And there's a second. Okay, folks, we have no other action items on the agenda and it's just easier for us to stay here. So we, we're going to come back out and adjourn. So if everybody could. With dispatch.
Yes.
While they get down, I'm going to go talk to.
You go right ahead. You go right ahead.
Get your answer before you forget.